I'd like to call the City Council Meeting of Monday, December 13, 2021, to order. If I can have the city clerk, please call the room.
Mayor Flores.
President.
Deputy Mayor Tharp.
President.
Councilmember Noble.
President.
Councilmember Digo.
Here.
Councilmember Pierce.
Here.
Councilmember Busquey. May we have a call?
All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to be filed under the name of the State of Florida. It's to be read by the public, which is the hand.
One nation, one nation, under God, is indivisible. And just to be read as a oral.
All right, I know our attorney's running a little bit late. He should be here shortly. Do you have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second. A motion made by Councilmember Busquey, second by Deputy Mayor Tharp. All in favor?
Aye.
Did I get everybody? Yep. Okay. That motion carries five zero. Comments from the public for agenda items only. If you wish to speak, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Once again, these are on agenda items only. All right, seeing none, moving on to consent agenda. Do you have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Attorney Turner.
Attorney Turner.
Attorney Turner seated.
Would you like to speak?
I cannot hear you.
Can't hear me?
I can hear you now.
Okay. Anybody else having issues? Okay. All right, so moving on to, anyone want to speak on any agenda items? Seeing none, okay, moving on to our consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. All right, a motion made by Councilmember Busquey, second by Deputy Mayor Tharp. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, that motion carries five zero. I'm going to ask that all the council members, please speak into the mic. I can't, right now, I'm not hearing everybody. All right, moving on to our regular agenda. Our first item is Resolution 2021-57. If I can have the city clerk, please read it by title.
Resolution 2021-57, removing the schedule of fees for land development application reviews under Chapter 12, subdivision of land development regulations in Chapter 16, zoning regulations of the City of Green Acres Code of Ordinances, provided for a parallel conflict of resolutions and provided for an effective date.
Thank you. Good evening.
Sorry. We have Karen Gardner Young, zoning administrator, presenting.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Karen Gardner Young, on behalf of the City of Green Acres. This is a request in order to update the fee schedule for the development and neighborhood services. There's a number of reasons we took a look at the fees. One is the fee schedule hasn't been updated since 2012. So it's been nine years since we've taken a look at it. There's been an increase in the consumer price, so we want to keep up with inflation. We also compared our fees to those with other municipalities doing the same work. And we also calculated the cost of processing the development petitions based upon our salaries, number of meetings we go to, the amount of time it takes in order to process each type of petition. The changes proposed are four. One is to remove any petitions which we no longer hear. For example, development of regional impacts. Those are no longer heard, they're no longer permissible, so we want to delete that line. The second item is addition of petitions that we might have just created. For example, we're looking at an administrative variance process, so we want to make sure we have a fee associated with any of those processes that we might be adding. The third item is to add for costs of reviewing petitions that typically we haven't collected in the past, but when you go to other cities and take a look, they usually charge it. An example is a alcohol beverage license review, where we actually have to review it, sign off on it, that's typically a minor fee. In the past, we haven't collected one, so we're putting that into our chart. And the last one is the addition of a new fee, which we're calling special services. That is to recoup costs for services such as attorney's fees or engineering fees. As you know, we don't have a city engineer, we use a contract engineer. So any fees associated with a petition that this individual would necessarily have to review would be charged back in an escrow account. So it's a pass-through. So whatever invoice we get, we just pass it back to the petitioner. If there's excess in the account at the end of the time, then we refund the monies. If it turns out we need additional monies to cover because we're running low, we would let the petitioner know that additional monies would need to be placed into the escrow. The only item I'm asking, one change on the fee schedule, is that I accidentally put in for an advertisement fee for site plan, which we don't do. So I'd be asking that the document you have in front of you adopt it, except for that one change, so it would go from $1,000 to zero. The instrument has been reviewed by legal counsel. We've also prepared it in compliance with applicable state statutes and code requirements, and staff is recommending adoption of Resolution 2021-57, which is the update of the fee schedule. I ask that our record and file be included as part of the record, and if anybody has any questions or comments or concerns, I'm here to answer them.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions from the council? Deputy Mayor Tharp.
Just more of a point going forward, what would you recommend for review timeframe? Nine years seems a little too long. So would you recommend annually, two years? What should we look to put in there as far as reviewing these fees?
In other jurisdictions I've been in, typically it's an annual, it goes hand in hand with the budget. So we make a check to double check that we've got everything covered. It may not result in a change, but it should be reviewed during that timeframe.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution 2021-57.
Second. All right, I have a motion made by Councilmember Pierce, second by Deputy Mayor Tharp. Are there any other comments or questions from the council?
No, was there an exception to, did you mention an exception?
Yes.
It was printed.
Yes, so the motion would be adoption of the fee schedule as presented with the one change, to change the site plan advertising fee from $1,000 to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Do we need to restate that motion? City attorney?
I think we're fine.
We're good, okay, thank you.
As presented, right.
Right, as presented.
As presented.
All right. So, motion by Councilmember Pierce, second by Deputy Mayor Tharp. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries five zero. We're now moving on to item 10, Public Hearing, ordinance 2021-05, first reading. If I can have our city clerk, please read the ordinance by title.
Mayor, can I just ask, I don't think Kara is due, she isn't here yet. Can we pass the next two items, and then when she shows up, go back to them?
Is that, would that be an issue with the council?
No.
All right, so if you're keeping track at home, we're going to move on to item 12, and then we'll come back to item 10 and 11. So let's move on to item 12, Public Hearing for Ordinance 2021-16, second reading. If I can have our city clerk, please read the ordinance by title.
Ordinance 2021-16, second reading, creating a new multi-purpose development review and appeals board to be called the Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals at Section 16-81 through Section 16-85 of Chapter 16, zoning regulations, Article 2, Administration, Division 3 of the City's Code of Ordinances. We pull in the existing Section 16-81 through 16-84 of Chapter 16, zoning regulations, Article 2, Administration, Division 3, Planning Commission, local planning agency, and we pull in the existing Section 16-101 through 16-107 of Chapter 16, zoning regulations, Article 2, Administration, Division 4, Zoning Board of Adjustments and Appeals, creating a new Division 4 to the entire variances at Chapter 16, zoning regulation, Article 2, Administration, to include Section 16-101 through 16-105, and creating a new administrative variance process at Section 16-106, providing for related revisions throughout the City's Code of Ordinances, to replace the existing board's name with the name of the new Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals, providing for appeal of conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, providing for inclusion and clone, and providing for an effective date.
And once again, we have Karen Gardner Young, our zoning administrator, presenting.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council and mayor. This is the second reading of ordinance number 2021-16. The intent is to create a new board that would hear not only what was previously heard by the Planning Commission, but also heard by the Zoning Board of Appeals. I'm prepared to make the same presentation. I haven't made any changes to the ordinance itself, but I did want the council to be aware that outside of the process, we did receive an email from a prospective candidate indicating that the monthly meeting date, which is the third Wednesday, they would be asking that that be changed because they have a conflict during that meeting date. But it was not done during, you know, the process, during the Planning Commission, it was outside of that process, but I wanted to bring it to your attention, since it was communication received. So I leave up to the council, if you want me to do the presentation again, I'm happy to do that, or if you'd like to discuss the meeting date, however you would like to proceed further. Mayor, look for your direction.
Thank you. Any council members requesting for the presentation one more time? I don't see a need to do the presentation again. Are there any comments or questions for our zoning administrator? I do have a question. Would that be at the determination of the council, the time and date of that, or is that something that the board itself governs?
Mayor, you could do it either way. The way it's worded in the ordinance is presented, it indicates that the member of the PZAB will regularly scheduled on a monthly basis on the third Wednesday of the month, and such as other times as a PZAB chair, or majority of the members may determine to be necessary. So we could make it a specific date, or we could change that to be as determined by the PZA board, if that's your desire. So whichever way you want to go, we can certainly draft the language necessary.
I guess, sorry, I'm talking, I guess in my opinion, I'd let them govern that aspect of the meeting, and I'll wait to hear from the council, Councilmember Pierce.
Yeah, I'd like to have the board take care of that.
Anybody, Deputy Mayor Tharp?
I don't have a problem with the board taking care of the date, I just would like it to be a consistent date every month, would be my only recommendation.
Agreed. Any other comments from the council?
I agree.
I think that's why they're asking, so they have a little bit.
Okay, so I can make a suggestion, that that language, the meeting of the PZAB shall be regularly scheduled on a monthly basis on a consistent day of the week as determined by the PZAB.
But aren't you asking for that wiggle room? That's what I think they're asking for, is that there may be a time occasionally where they can't meet, if it's a Wednesday, they may have to meet, so they're going to have that wiggle room, right?
Well, and then the second part says, and at such other times as the PZA chair or majority of the members may determine to be necessary.
Okay.
So it's, the first part is just leaving it as desired by the council to the PZAB, but making sure it's a constant day of the week, so we know whether it's the second Wednesday, the fourth Tuesday, whatever it is, so we can notify and be transparent regarding it, and then also allow them the opportunity on another day if necessary.
Correct. And just my, another personal comment, making sure that the public, it's an adequate time for the public to be able to participate.
So the recommendation by staff would be adoption of the ordinance with the change to Section 16-83C. First sentence reading, meetings of the PZAB shall be regularly scheduled on a monthly basis on a consistent day of the week as determined by the PZAB, and at such other times as the PZAB chair or majority of the members may determine to be necessary.
Sounds good, all right. This is a public hearing, so I'm going to open up, Public Hearing for Ordinance 2021-16. Are there anyone wishing to speak in favor of the ordinance? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition of the ordinance? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve 2021-16.
With the changes.
As read. As read.
Perfect. Second. All right, a motion made by Councilmember Douglas, second by Deputy Mayor Tharp. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries five zero. All right, I believe Kara is here now, so we're now going to move back to item 10, Public Hearing for Ordinance 2021-05, for first reading. If I can have our city clerk, please read the ordinance by title.
Ordinance 2021-05, first reading, ordinance adopted by the City Council of the City of Green Acres, Florida, amendment of future land use, of the future land use amendment of the City, City's comprehensive plan to change the future land use designation of 14 parcels of land totaling approximately 33.059 acres located at the northwest corner of the intersection between South Haverhill Road and Nash Trail, as approximately 1,400 feet north of Lantana Road from a Palm Beach County designation of medium residential five units per acre and a low residential unit per acre, to a City of Green Acres designation of residential medium density and residential high density as requested by the petitioner Whitman Group, agent for the owners Ian and Fred, Manor, Aaron, Francis, and Elsie, American German Club, Ernest, Lynn, Chapman, Claude, Claudia, Cornell, and Costello, Demis Chu, Matthew, Green, Melanie, and Noah Maladuna, Shuplee Enterprises, Philip Sees, Virginia Walter, and Calphal Burney, as provided for appeal of conflicting ordinances, provided for severability, provided for transfer to the Department of Economic Opportunity, provided for inclusion in the comprehensive plan, and provided for an effective date.
Thank you. And our Director of Development and Neighborhood Services, Kara Irwin-Furze, is presenting.
Hi, thank you for your patience in postponing, I appreciate it. Tonight before you is Blossom Trail, also known as Nash Trail. This is CPA 2004, at ordinance 2021-06. If you remember, in August of 2020, the city had a referendum for a annexation of 15 parcels of land just outside of the city's boundary to the south, located on the west side of Haverhill Road, north of Nash, just south of Nautica Isles, and east of 52nd Street North. And you can see on the boundary map of the C, at the very bottom here is the location of where we did the referendum annexation. This was put to a vote of the residents, and at least 50% of those residents had to agree to annex. We got a 75% approval, so the annexation was complete. After annexation, we have two years, roughly, to apply city land use and city zoning. Until that time, the county land use and the county zoning will still apply to the property. Before you tonight, we are proposing to change the land use of 14 pieces of property located within the city currently. 13 of the 14 subject properties have a Palm Beach County medium residential five, or MR5, future land use designation, which puts a maximum density of 5 dwelling units per acre. One of the properties located at 5131 Nash Trail has a portion of a parcel located at 5696, 52nd Drive South, has a Palm Beach County low residential, or LR1, future land use designation. This is the existing Palm Beach County future land use map for the property. In red is the outline of the property, the yellow is what they call MR5, and then the white is the LR1 on the subject site. Just to give you a little background of Palm Beach County, in the staff report, we have to do an analysis of maximum development potential for a site when we're changing the land use and looking at zoning. We also want to be consistent and compatible with what's around the project or what's being developed around the project. In Palm Beach County, MR5 allows up to five units per acre. They also allow for a transfer of development rights of up to three units per acre. So total, you can have a maximum density of about eight units per acre for redevelopment potential on those sites. If you don't want to do transfer of development rights, you can do workforce housing, which allows up to a 50% bonus for providing workforce units within a development. So the county provides different options to increase the density, these are adopted in their comprehensive plan, and they look at things from a gross number. So if you have a 10 acre, and you have a five units per acre, it's 10 times 5, or you can do 50 units per acre. In the city, we do it a little bit differently. We look at a net acreage for our density determinations. We require applicants to take out right-of-way from their development potential. This can come out to be from 15 to 20%, maybe less, maybe more, of the site for what they utilize for right-of-way or roadways. And so it's not a straight number, so already, we're already a little bit lower than Palm Beach County. In this area, we have a lot of residential medium, which allows up to seven units per acre for us, but that's net. So once again, seven times the net acreage, so you're going to take away at least a portion of that acreage to make that determination. With residential low, like they have to the south, it's up to five dwelling units per acre, once again, that's net. So in looking to be competitive, or, you know, working, or trying to do consistent with the county, what we've proposing for the site is a combination of residential medium, which we allow that, like I said, on 7.91 acres, we're allowed to do up to seven units per acre, but that's net, we still have to net out whatever roadways. For the other portion of the site, closer to Haverhill Road and Nash Trail, we're proposing residential high for 25.15 acres, and that has a dwelling maximum density of 10 units per acre. And so when you add these together, we come out with a maximum development potential, it's actually quite consistent with the county's RM5 and LR1. There's an estimated number of units, under Palm Beach County, you can get about 254, under us, you can get about 253, and that's with the net versus the gross, and then the density bonuses that they have within Palm Beach County to allow. So we are being consistent, the applicant has the option to do, on the RM, they can do single-family home, zero lot line homes, planned unit development. On residential high, they're proposing a combination of the zero lot line and cluster homes, or what we would normally call townhomes. And these are all permitted uses, some of them are special exception uses, the zero lot line is a special exception, and then the town, the planned unit development is also a special exception. So ultimately, we have concurrent petitions that are all running at the same time for this application. We have the comprehensive plan amendment before you at the moment. We'll also propose a zoning change. Both of these are first reading, will be on first reading before you tonight, but the special exception for the planned unit development and the zero lot line homes and the site plan approval will not be before you until the next hearing, because upon second reading, when the land use and zoning changes, then we can look at the special exception in the site plan for the site. So one of the things we look at is compatibility to the north, south, east, and west. We look at the comparison between existing development to the north, you have Nautica Isles, they came in, a portion of their project was developed in Palm Beach County, a portion of it was developed within, under the code of Green Acres. There has residential low, or RL3 zoning, and residential low land use. To the east of the site, you have Verona Estates and Verona Palms, both of those have a land use of residential medium, zoning of RM2, and they were developed with single-family homes and townhomes. To the south of the subject site, across Nash Trail, is Palm Beach County Unincorporated Pocket. They have a combination of commercial low, they've had approvals for Caliber Collision and Racetrack, a little bit higher commercial intensity than I think we thought that they would allow there, but it has been approved. They also have Able Lawn Supplies, which is an industrial-type use, and then you have the German American Club, which is an institutional use. So to the south, we have more intensive industrial, institutional-type uses, so we feel like the applicant, what they're proposing with the combination of residential high adjacent to Nash Trail, adjacent to Haverhill, and then the residential low adjacent to the large estate lots that are existing within the area, is best for compatibility for the site. The applicant does have to go through concurrency when they're looking at land use changes. As I said, we look at maximum development potential, we want to make sure that for that maximum development potential, that if we are changing the comp plan to allow this development, that there is capacity for it. So you're looking at water, you're looking at sewer, you're looking at all those items that we planned for in our comprehensive plan. We also look at consistency with our comprehensive plan, consistency with the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council's Strategic Regional Policy Plan, and consistency with Chapter 163. Staff has evaluated in the staff report, I offer the staff report into the record tonight, as well as the file for the project, stating that staff believes the application for the land use change is compatible, it needs concurrency, it's consistent with the city's comp plan, Treasure Coast SRPP, and consistency with Chapter 163. So overall, staff does recommend approval of CPA 2004 through the adoption of ordinance 2021-05 to change the land use of the subject parcel from the county's LR1 and MR5 to the city's residential medium and residential high. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions from the council? All right, seeing none. Like to open public hearing for ordinance 2021-05, so on first reading. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the ordinance, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Can I take this out to speak?
Thank you.
Thank you. My name's Robert Palahniak. I live at 5536, 52nd Drive South, I am on the northwest corner of the property that's notched, and there's a southeast corner that's notched as well. I'm going to make a general statement, which is going to involve this one and the next one, but my statement on the next one will be brief, so I'll have to speak in general across both of the ordinances, 05 and then 06. So my property was not annexed into the border, I'm a notched property. Likewise, the southeast corner, this did go to a vote, but it was a very crafted vote, crafted so it could pass, and only the people that were annexed would vote on this, not people that were bordering with, that's going to be affected by this property. I have an estate home, I have 5,000 square foot home, under air. Putting up $400,000 homes next to my home, don't know what the value's going to be, but that'll be addressed in another matter. The properties that are on the west side are ag and estate homes, as we spoke about a minute ago. For the record, this is an attempt by Horton to increase the density and for profit, without regard to the roads, schools, city services, and parks. There's nothing that has been spoken regarding these matters. This is the same application that came before your own zoning board, which denied at 5-0, which was the proper procedure. Having been voted down 5-0 on that matter, they're now trying to have the land development code changed to suit what the developer needs. This is exactly the same, nothing has changed with this application. They came with zoning, they got voted down, then they came back with special exception. If you read the special exception, it's a joke, it's just filling, checking the box and saying, you need all this. But that'll be addressed. This has all the smacks of Pinecrest Lakes versus Martin County, and Southwest Conservancy versus Naples, same, same thing. The city cherry picked the properties, knowing that they would get the votes, and only those votes counted. My vote didn't count, I was excluded, knowing that they had enough votes to get this annexed into the city. The application produces no benefit to the existing community. This is not a forum for case law, this needs to be discussed before an impartial judge, who's the only one that can interpret the law. That's what this is, this falls under state statutes, all of this falls under state statutes. You can make assumptions, but the judge ultimately decides this. Case law has been refused in previous meetings, the courts have dealt with these issues before, and again, Pinecrest Lakes versus Martin County. It's not before this board that an impartial adjudication of the law, that's for a judge in a court of law. Now, the city wants to change the land development code to suit the developer strictly for profit. I keep going back to that, because that's all this is about. You could have told them, you get five units per acre, that's all you're going to get, but that's not happening, because it's all about money. But you can't argue the money, because that doesn't mean anything.
Robert, your time is up, I'll let you, you've got another 15 seconds to conclude.
I've got three more items, and I'll be done. I've got three more items and I'll be done.
You've got 15 more seconds.
City now wants to change the land to suit the developer. It would strain credibility that it's not a foregone conclusion that you will be approving what your own zoning board denied. If there's a transcript of the zoning board hearing, it should be part of this hearing. This needs to be moved out of this body and into a circuit court where an impartial judge can discuss this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. All right, anyone else wishing to speak in opposition of the ordinance, please state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed.
Would you like me to address any of the?
I'm sorry?
Would you like me to address any of the things that were said?
Yes.
I don't think, you guys want?
I would love.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Okay. First off, increasing density without regard to roads, city services or parks. Upon annexation, we do an urban services report, which we make sure that we can, we look at maximum development potential. We make sure that we can support the annexation. Roads, school, as well as all of the concurrency items like water, sewer, anything relative to development. That's part of our concurrency process. The application was not denied by the planning commission. If you look at your staff report on page nine of nine, the planning commission on a motion made by Commissioner Edmondson, seconded by Commissioner Robards, voted six to zero recommending approval of the comprehensive plan amendment as presented by staff. I believe the confusion is that this project did try to apply for a variance at one point. They went to the Board of Zoning Appeals and Adjustments a few months ago. They were denied. It had to do with parking or requirements. Well, it was actually about requirements for garage dimensions. And the Board of Zoning Appeals and Adjustments actually made it about parking and denied all their variance requests. So the applicant went back to the board and they actually changed their project to meet our codes. So there are no variances that they're proposing. And you'll see that when we put it before you next time. It does fall under state statutes. As I said, it is consistent with state statutes. We've done the quarantine. We've advertised. We've gone through the process. And we are changing, we have to change the land use from Palm Beach County to R. And we try to find the best one. They don't always match perfectly. But we feel that the proposed changes do match what is existing and has been developed around there. The area is changing. And we're trying to do our, you know, our best to have a change. The residential estate is being developed. The parcels are, the larger parcels are being sold off. And you have planned developments like Nautica Isles, Verona Estates and others around it.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 2021-05 first reading.
Motion made by Councilmember Pierce, second by Deputy Mayor Starpe. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries. Five, zero. All right, we're moving on to item 11, quasi judicial. Public hearing for ordinance 2021-06, first reading. If I can have our city clerk, please read the ordinance by title.
Ordinance 2021-06, first reading. Approving a zoning change for 14 parcels of land. Total of approximately 33.05 acres located at the northwest corner of the intersection between South Haverhill Road and Nash Trail. Is approximately 1,400 feet north of Lantana Road from Palm Beach County designation of agricultural residential and residential estate to a city of green acres designation of residential medium density two and residential high density as requested by the petitioner, Whitten Group Agent for the Owners in Frank Manor Area and Francis LLC and American Journal Club, Ernest and Glenn Chapman, Claudia Cornell and Costa, Demas Chu, Matthew Green, Melanie and Noah Maladonna, Sheffley Enterprises, Philip Z, Virginia Walter and Koffel Bernas, providing for changes to the official zoning map, providing for appeal of conflict in warnings, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
And once again, we have Cara Irwin Ferris, Director of Development and Neighborhood Services presenting.
Thank you. Tonight, we are ruling a quasi judicial hearing on the following cases. ZC 2004 Blossom Trail, also known as Nash Trail. This means that the board is required by law to base its decision on the evidence contained in the record of this proceeding, which consists of the testimony at hearing, the materials which are in the official city file on this application, and any documents presented during this hearing. The board is also required by law to allow cross-examination of any witnesses who testify tonight. Cross-examination may occur after the staff, the applicant and other participants have made their presentation and will be permitted in the order of the witnesses' appearance. It is necessary that anyone who testifies at the hearing remain until the conclusion of the hearing in order to be able to respond to any questions. If you plan to testify this evening or wish to offer written comments, you may do so when prompted by the chair. All who intend to offer testimony this evening on any of the cases will not be sworn in. Those who will be providing testimony, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you affirm that the testimony you are about to provide is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Thank you. You may be seated.
I believe with quasi judicial hearing tonight, the applicant will present first.
Okay. Is, do I do the ex parte communication first or after?
First.
All right, at this point in time, I'm going to go down to Deas. I'm going to start with Councilmember Bousquet. And if you have disclosed if you have had any ex parte communication.
I have not.
Councilmember Pierce?
No.
Councilmember Dugan?
I have none.
I have not myself either. Councilmember?
I have had none.
None. And Deputy Mayor Starpe?
No communications.
All right, at this time, I see applicants to come to the podium, state their name and address for the records, and you can begin your presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Joanna Machado for the Record Project Manager with WGIA 2035 Vista Parkway, West Palm Beach, representing the applicant. Before you tonight is the application for Blossom Trail. It is comprised of applications CPA 2004, CC 2004, the special exception on the PED 2003, and SP 2003. In full transparency, we prepare a presentation, understanding that before you, it's only the land use and the rezoning. The site plan is coming forward, but we prepared the presentation in full transparency so you can see all the requests before you. This is the same of the future land use. As Cara was specifying before, it's a land use change only to establish a land use that's compatible with the city regulations from, after the adoption of the annexation from the county. The rezoning to apply a compatible zoning designation for the property code. The special exception is to apply for a planned unit development for the construction of zero outlines and cluster homes within the development and the site plan approval for 220 dwelling units. That will be coming for you next month, January 3rd. Next slide. Just for general purposes, the property is just about 1,000 feet north of Lantana Road and Haverhill. It's comprised of the 14 parcels with a total of 33.06 acres. And it has already been annexed to the prop, to the city. Next slide. This is just some historical. As Cara was going over, the date and the majority of vote, where 50% was required and we got 75% to vote. Just to correct something that was stated on the previous application, the vote is only to those parties or properties that are affected or will be impacted by the annexation. We cannot seek votes outside of those properties. The next slide is just a graphic representation of the land use as it is in the county and the transition to the land use within the city from MR5 and LR1 to the medium density and high density. And the next slide is the same thing, only from a zoning aspect, going from the AR and RE to the RH and RM. Next slide, it just shows just the compatibility of the site within the surrounding uses. As stated before, the property is to propose to be developed with townhomes or cluster homes and zero lot lines. As you can see, as to the north, the property is being developed with zero lot lines. To the east, across Haverhill, we have a combination of zero lot lines and townhomes. To the south, we have the properties not developed yet, but the gas station at the corner, the Able Lowmore, those within commercial, industrial and the townhomes to the southwest. There is still some remaining estate homes or larger single-family lots just to the west of the property. When we take this into consideration, we know that we're coming into a built environment. And we do try to be compatible with those uses around us. And we provide landscape buffering throughout the perimeter of the property to address any objections or screening requirements for the PED. The next slide is just a graphic representation of how the project will be laid out. This is just a little easier on the eye from a technical site plan. But you can see, we've kept the mass density of the cluster to townhomes to the east half of the site, most closer to Haverhill, where there's older townhomes, where there's traffic. We've had the recreation area and the lake centrally located within the site so that it is accessible to all units. And then we have the lower density zero lot lines to the west. Again, in the transition to go from higher density, more intense uses down to the estate homes that are on our west. Access to the property is maintained from Nash Trail on the south end, one access point. And there is one point of egress only on Haverhill on the, up in the northeast corner of the site. That's only egress.
Oh, okay. Now I see.
And again, just the breakdown is for 230 dwelling units total in 76 zero lot lines, 154 townhomes or cluster development with a net density, as Cara was stated, of 8.45 dwelling units an acre. Then I'll just go through the next few slides rather quickly. It's just that we have, as stated before, complied with all the prerequisites of the code, of the city of green acres for the land use, the rezoning, and in the next slide, the special exception, the site plan criteria. Staff recommendation has, staff recommends approval of the request as proposed. And we received unanimous vote for three out of the four requests and one vote for the CPA application 2004 of 5-1. So all votes were passed at the last planning commission hearing. At this time, I reserve any other time for any questions that the council may have or any rebuttal afterwards.
Thank you. Let's do the staff presentation. I'll now take questions.
Thank you. For the record, Cara Ferris with the city's Development and Neighborhood Services Department. Before you tonight is Blossom Trail, also known as Nash Trail. ZC 2004, ordinance 2021-06. As I stated previously, this site is made up of 14 parcels of land that are currently contain about nine single-family homes. There are some accessory uses on the different sites, barns, garages. The subject site located at the southeast corner of the site, it's not a part of this application. But city staff, because it is part of the annexation, we will apply land use and zoning at a future time for that parcel. It will be a city-initiated application like we do for annexations. But as stated before, the parcel located in the upper northern or northwest corner is not or was not a part of the annexation. And we did that because at the request of the proprietor, they didn't want to be a part of the annexation. And it didn't create an issue with consistency or meeting statutes. So we were able to make that recommendation. The current Palm Beach County zoning for the site is agricultural and residential estate. 13 of the 14 properties have the agricultural residential. It provides single-family residential, recreational and agricultural uses. One of the properties located at 5141 Nash Trail has a residential estate or RE district zoning designation, which provides transition between agricultural and conservation areas and more urban residential communities create residential environment. The, we are proposing to change the land use. So we have to choose a city zoning designation that is compatible with our land use that we've chosen. For the subject site, for the 7.91 acres that we're proposing to do residential medium, we're proposing a zoning of RM2, which allows for the zero lot line homes that the applicant is proposing. On the portion of the site on the east side, we are consistent with your residential high land use. We're proposing an RH or residential high zoning on 25.15 acres of the site. And looking at the change criteria and the finding of fact, the applicant went over this a little bit. It's fully in the staff report. And I'd like to offer in as part of the record, the staff report, as well as the file for the project. We determined that it's not contrary to the land use pattern or creating any adverse effects. It's a existing land use plan. We looked at our existing proposed advisory land use plan. While we were not following it with residential low, we feel there've been a lot of changes in this area. And we've justified changing to the residential medium and residential high. This does not create an isolated district. It's following the population density patterns, existing district patterns. The amendment is necessary after the annexation. After we change from Palm Beach County to the city, we must apply our own land use and zoning. It does not negatively affect public safety or influence negatively living conditions. And we are doing the zoning change in order to accommodate the land use change and the change into the city. And it does not confer any special privileges to the applicant to provide them the zoning designation. This is the finding of fact for the criteria. And staff is recommending approval of ZC 2004 through the adoption of ordinance 2021-06.
Thank you. All right, at this time, are there any questions for the applicant or for any of our staff from the council? Seeing nothing from the council?
I have a question.
Okay. Go ahead.
It just sort of touched on the, I know the county dictates that the square footage, the acreage that we need for parks.
Well, our comp plan does. Yeah. So there's some national standards. And then the county has their standards. And then we have some for ourselves as well.
Do we have standards for agricultural use?
We don't. We do have agricultural land use and zoning. But we don't have minimums or requirements for it. We just allow for it.
Okay.
We do have some residential estate homes within the city, larger lots, half-acre lots, larger parcels. And they, we accommodate them with that, you know, that residential estate zoning.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
But when we get to public comments. Anybody else from the council? All right. So at this point in time, I'd like to open public hearing for ordinance, where am I? For the quasi judicial public hearing, ordinance 2021-06. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the ordinance, please come forward. State your name and address for the record. Seeing none. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition of the ordinance, please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Again, Robert Palahinik, 5536 52nd Drive South. I'm in opposition to this. I'm just here to preserve my rights for another body. What concerns me is no special privileges. I'm getting everything to ask for. I didn't hear anything they got turned down for, but that's not here and there. What does bother me are the gopher tortoises that live in this community. There's quite a few of them. So we're going to just maul over there, which is a protected species in the state of Florida. So that, but that's not for here. But there's a lot of things that we're just going to push by the wayside so we can get homes and a development. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition of the ordinance, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. All right, public hearing is now closed. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion for the quasi judicial public hearing ordinance 2021-06 first reading to approve it.
Second.
All right, have a motion made by Councilmember Pierce. Second by Councilmember Bousquet. All in favor?
Aye.
No.
Yes. Okay. Let's do a roll call, please. Will you do a roll call, please?
May I first?
I don't vote on folks.
Deputy Mayor Starpe?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Manova?
Yes.
Councilmember Madzugo?
No.
Councilwoman Pierce?
Yes.
Councilwoman Buscay?
Yes.
All right. That motion carries for the one.
Thank you.
All right. If you're keeping track at home, we are now back to item 13, ordinance 2021-19, first reading. If I can have our city clerk please read ordinance by title.
Ordinance 2021-19, first reading, amending Green Acres City Code, Chapter 16, zoning regulations, Article 2, Administration, Division 2, Land Development Staff by renaming Land Development Staff to Development Review Committee, replacing outdated names of the city departments or committees, boards, and updating procedures and renaming Land Development Staff to Development Review Committee and other sections of the code, providing for appeal of conflict in ordinances, providing for severability, providing for inclusion in code, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. And we have, once again, Karen Garner Young, Southern Administrator, presenting.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. This is a zoning text amendment to rename our Land Development Staff Review Committee to Development Review Committee. Part of the reason is to clarify the responsibilities and functions of the Development Review Committee, also to align the code section in compliance with recent zoning text amendments and budget changes, and also to prevent some confusion. Land Development Staff is not a typical phrase used in the planning field, while a Development Review Committee typically is. So what we're doing, we're doing two different changes. One is the Development Review Committee itself. So we're changing the name from Land Development Staff to Development Review Committee. It would also permit the Development Review Committee to consult with outside agencies such as Palm Beach County Water Utilities if it's appropriate for the petition that's being heard by this committee. It clarifies that DRC meetings are open but not intended for public comment. It states that the Department of Development and Neighborhood Services is responsible for the DRC process. It permits the DRC committee to call a meeting outside of the schedule if needed. This is to help if a petition comes in and it's on an off time. Land Development Staff only meets twice a month. It meets the second Thursday and the third Thursday. The second Thursday being the intent to the petitioner to explain to the committee what the petition is. And the second meeting is for the committee or staff members itself to meet, to discuss, to provide any comments. So if you miss the timing, which is supposed to be the 15th of the month, this would allow an additional meeting so we can continue the process if appropriate. It also limits that a petition can be heard by the Development Review Committee for twice. Again, the intention is to make sure that whatever paperwork is provided is accurate and consistent and shows the changes. And lastly, it would allow the Department of Neighborhood Services to add any items to the DRC meeting if necessary. So those are the actual changes to the Land Development Staff. Then we also have compliance with recent code changes, and that one is to change the name of the Planning and Engineering Department to Development and Neighborhood Services, which was accomplished through the budget, and also changes the name of the Planning Commission, which you just heard and approved, to the Planning Zoning Board of Appeals. The purpose is to update the development review process and adopt terminology which is more recognizable in the development field to avoid confusion. People look at Land Development Staff, they're like, am I talking to a staff member? They don't understand it's actually a committee. Also, we determined that it is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan, and the zoning text amendment does further the goals of the zoning code. Land Development Staff heard this petition on October 7th and 14th and had no objections. The Planning Commission on November 17th recommended approval by 6-0 of the zoning text amendment 21-03 with no comments. Staff is recommending approval of ZTA 2103. This is just the first reading of ordinance 2021-19. We would have to come back for a second reading. I'd ask that everything in the file be included as part of the record, and if anybody has any questions or comments, I'm here to answer them.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions for staff?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 2021-19, first reading.
Second. All right. I have a motion made by Councilmember Pierce, second by Deputy Mayor Tharp. Are there any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. All right. Moving on to ordinance 2021-20, first reading. If I can have our city clerk please read the ordinance by title.
Ordinance 2021-20, first reading, amending Green Acres Code of Ordinances, Chapter 16, zoning regulations, Article 2, Administration, Division 2, Amendments to Approve Special Exceptions in Site Plans, Sections 2-212 through Sections 2-216, by replacing Class 1, 2, and 3 Site Plan and Special Exception Amendments for minor and major Site Plan and Special Exception Amendments, making similar terminology changes in other sections for consistency, providing for appeal of conflict in ordinances, providing for severability, providing for inclusion in code, and providing for an effective date.
And once again, we have Karen Garner Young, Southern Administrator, presenting.
Promises last month. Tonight, thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, good evening, City Council. This is a change to the site plan and special exception amendment process. It is a zoning text amendment. And so really, what we're doing here is our existing code provides for a Class 1 and a Class 3 Site Plan and Special Exception Amendment. Class 2 was previously deleted when I was here. When I came in, I was kind of like, it's confusing to go from a Class 1 to a Class 3. So I'm proposing we go from Class 1 and 3 to minor and major amendments. There are some changes. The change, first of all, is everything that was previously under a Class 1 Site Plan or Special Exception Amendment is still remaining under the minor amendment. However, we have added on some additional items, including a shared parking agreement, alteration of the location of a road, walkway, or structure by not more than five feet, oops, relocation of parking, signage landscaping due to loss of site area to accommodate, for example, widening of the public right-of-way. So it goes through and makes some of these changes. Then what we do is to say everything that's not in a Site Plan 1, or we're now calling as a minor amendment, is going to be a major amendment. So again, we have a listing of what the minor site plan, special exception opportunities are, and then we say anything that's not under that, then would be deemed to be a major. Now, one of the changes is also how they're reviewing these amendments. So under the proposed minor amendment, you would hold a pre-application meeting with the Development and Neighborhood Services. You would submit an application that would be reviewed, I put Development Review Committee, Land Development Staff, and then a memorandum would be issued by the Development and Neighborhood Services Department. If the applicant objects to the conditions of approval that's being proposed by staff, the appeal would go to the city manager. The way it presently reads is similar, but the appeal would go to the city council instead of the city manager. The idea of that is that this is minor amendment. It's something that wouldn't have as much impact as, say, a major amendment would have. Now, what we're proposing on the major amendment is you would do the same process, pre-application meeting, an application to the Development Neighborhood Services, reviewed by the Development Review Committee, but this time you would have a public hearing. So it would be a public hearing in front of the PZAB, the new committee that we created with a recommendation to the city council, and then it would be a public hearing to the city council. The way that the class 3 presently works is that staff makes a recommendation on a memo, and then the Planning Commission and the council have the right to object. If an objection is received, then it goes to a hearing. The feeling here is that because it is a major amendment, we felt it deserves the appropriateness of having an actual public hearing. So again, indicated the difference, Class 1 is development review by the department, appeal to the city council, it was the old process. The new process is appeal to the city manager. We're deleting a Class 2. We're not proposing any to be a Class 2. And Class 3 is department. Right now, it has with the Planning Council and City Council having seven days to object, but we're actually recommending that it goes to the new planning board with recommendation and the city council actually making the decision. The Land Development Staff reviewed the zoning text amendment on October 21st, and there were no comments. The Planning Commission reviewed it on November 17th, recommended approval 6-0 with the ZTA 2104 with no comments. Staff is recommending approval of ZTA 2104. And again, this is first reading, so would have to come back for second reading should there be any comments, questions, or changes. I ask that everything in the file be included as part of the record, and I'm here to answer any questions or comments you may have.
Are there any comments or questions from the council? Just a quick question. Have you used this previously, the minor, major?
I have in other jurisdictions. Again, it's a terminology that's much more recognizable. I think when a petitioner comes in, they can understand the difference between a major and a minor. It's much harder when you have to explain what's a Class 1, what's a Class 3. And the methods that we're creating are also much more common within the development community.
Excellent. Thank you. And my last question is to our city manager, McHugh. Any issues that you see with the minor deferring to you?
No. No issues.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 2021-20, first reading.
Second. All right. I have a motion made by Councilmember Pierce, second by Deputy Mayor Tharp. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. I believe, Councilmember, do you?
Aye.
All right. 5-0. All right. So we are now moving on to item 15, board appointments for the Scholarship Committee. We have Andrea, City Mayor Andrea McHugh presenting.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Currently, the city has one regular member vacancy. Ms. Eliana Gerard has submitted an application to serve on that committee. Staff is recommending approval of the board appointment.
Mrs. McHugh, may I make a suggestion? I suggest we put this decision off until March, when a new, when a new chair of the Scholarship Committee is also appointed, and there's no timing problem because the committee does not meet until April.
Mr. Mayor?
All right. So you're wishing to not appoint Ms. Gerard at this point?
Well, to put off the appointment until after the new committee is formed.
All right. Do...
I'll make a counter motion. I'll go ahead. Councilmember?
I just want to say that we're fortunate that we have people that volunteer, and I would make a motion to accept Ms. Eliana Gerard.
Okay. So we're still in the comments. Do I have a motion by Councilmember Madzugo?
Yes.
All right. I have a motion on the floor by Councilmember Madzugo to appoint Ms. Gerard. Is there a second?
I second it.
All right. I have a motion by Councilmember Madzugo, second by Councilmember Pierce.
I'd like to make a substitute motion.
And at this time, I'll open it up for comments of public, and then Councilmember Buscay.
You have to vote first.
This is the substitute motion for Paulus.
Paul did not, Councilmember Madzugo did not make a motion originally.
I made a motion to table.
She asked to defer.
She made a suggestion.
Yeah, she was a suggestion. It was not a motion.
Okay.
So we have, I'm going to defer on the floor to Councilmember Madzugo.
Again, I'm not going to repeat what I said earlier, but I think there's no need to rush to do this until there's a new chair and a new committee and perhaps a new council.
Okay. So I have, is that a substitute motion, Councilmember Madzugo?
Yes. I'm sorry, yes.
Okay. So I have a substitute motion on the floor. Do I have a second? All right. Seeing no second, we'll go back to a first motion, which is to appoint Ms. Gerard. Are there any other comments or questions by the council? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
That motion carries for the one. All right. Moving on to discussion item, item number 16, Property Improvement Program Criteria. I have, I think Eileen's going to take this one by herself. All right. So we have Administrative Assistant Eileen Hernandez presenting.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm here for questions, I guess. It's an item for discussion, so any questions you all have.
All right. I think this is an item that Councilmember Madzugo wanted us to go over one more time? Councilmember Madzugo, so where's yours?
I'm sorry?
I thought you were the one that requested to bring this item up.
Yes. Okay. My questions were at that time, I wanted to have a little clarification as to the criteria, because I certainly was, you know, for the program. I didn't understand, though, that it was also going to include business. So I kind of would like the criteria is how you would determine a commercial property. The criteria actually stayed the same from the first year that we had this program. The only change was the amount that they would be awarded. It is a total of $100,000, but businesses can only get a maximum of $50,000 out of it. Now, it's a matching grant, it's a maximum of $5,000. Businesses are, it's, how do I put this? So I guess my question is, okay, we certainly have a lot of local small businesses.
Yes.
But will our grants be available for large commercial corporations that happen to have a location here in Green Acres?
Yes, it will.
And now you get a P and L, a property law statement, you get a balance sheet. We don't have, we don't have an income requirement in the program.
Okay.
Now, it is a scoring system, so businesses, for example, last year, we, or the last time we had the program, Bud's Chicken was one to be awarded. They made a big impact. They, you know, changed the colors of the building, made some upgrades to the roofs, windows. So it made a big impact, and it is on a voting system. So the more impact you would make to the community, the more traffic that sees these changes, you get a higher scoring in it. Okay. So last year, we had $50,000 in our grant program for this. And we expended all 50?
Just to clarify, last year, the program did not run. You guys chose not to run the program.
Okay. So we have, it was the 2019 fiscal year. Okay. Oh, okay. Thank you. Because I wasn't here at that particular meeting, so I was wondering if, okay.
You answered my questions.
Yeah. In the fiscal year of 2019, there was actually a total of three businesses that were awarded.
Right.
One was Concraft in the original section, which, I mean, I can, we can go back to the photos. It was a big improvement. One was Brave Nation, which is also in the original section, and we had Bud's Chicken.
Okay.
The rest were all residential.
Councilmember Manova?
Well, I'm realizing that this opportunity to discuss the project was, in part, I believe, since we were discussing the fact that businesses received the last time, whenever it was, and initially, I was, I thought it was unfair that they received it. But I know that I've suggested several times now, this is probably the third time that we discussed it, that we have two programs, and maybe this is the meeting that was supposed to come to that agreement. And we have two programs, $50,000 for residential homes, $50,000 for commercial, okay? If we can afford it, okay? Or we have 25 and 25, or 30 and 30. But nonetheless, I think then there's not a feeling that more businesses got money than individuals, so we should have two programs. Do you remember this being discussed coming up?
May I ask?
Can we please go over the whole program and how we can...
The amount...
I want to hear whether she remembers that we discussed two programs.
Let's ask the city manager, explain.
Yes, it was discussed. It was discussed during the budget process. It was something that you had actually brought up during the budget process when we were talking about allocations. Initially, for 2019, there was $50,000 allocated. We did have the three businesses that did apply at that time. Going into this current fiscal year, the program has $100,000 allocated, no more than $50,000 for business, for commercial, but then the remainder of that can go for residential. We don't believe that we're probably going to have $50,000 in requests from the commercial, so I did bring that back before you for consideration and approval, that it would be no more than $50,000 for the commercial. That would allow for more residential, should there be the demand for more residential.
All right. But these are all estimates, but I'm not sure I quite understand removing the estimates. Do we have the ability, it could be one program, $50,000 for businesses and $30,000 for residential. Tell me exactly what we have.
We currently have $100,000 in the budget, and again, $50,000 of that was to residential, $50,000 was designated to the... $50,000 was designated to the commercial. But in order to ensure that if we had more residential applications than commercial applications, I came back before the council and had asked that we reword the language just to ensure that if we only have $10,000 in commercial applications, but we have $90,000 in residential, we don't want to turn those other $40,000 away in residential because, you know, we have more of those, or we have less.
All right, again, that's an opinion, whether we should not turn them away. I mean, we could turn them away. It's first come, first served. So I mean, it's, I don't see how anyone can be objected to the fact that all of a sudden the project was sold, they'll sign up for the next year, I would think, and maybe have some priority for the next year. But...
The budgeted amount doesn't change. The $100,000 doesn't change. That was what was put in the budget. That's the amount that we have to work with.
What I'm a little concerned is that it requires an individual to make a determination. The determination looks like we don't have enough commercial, therefore, open the door on residential. I don't like that aspect of it. I like it to be cut and dry. It's this and it's that, where there's nobody who makes that decision, which could be...
I don't know that we'll, I don't know that we'd have a situation, is there is a window, there is an application period window. Once that window closes, the applications that are received are those applications that are considered and then ranked based on the scoring that we have established.
That's fine, I mean, that's...
So there's no, it wouldn't be that, oh, well, now we can, you know, make some considerations or exceptions for others that come to the table later, that there's a window of time where those that are interested in applying for the up to $5,000 reimbursement, they have the ability to do that, but once that window closes, they don't, they no longer have the ability to come and make those requests.
Well, I'll terminate my comments. If you feel that the wording is sufficient, fine, I withdraw any comments.
All right, are there any other comments or questions from, I do have a question. When are we opening the application process?
January 1st through March 1st.
Through March 1st?
Yeah.
Excellent, thank you.
January through March, okay.
And are we doing some sort of outreach program to let people know that this is happening? Are we specifically identifying some homes that perhaps we can...
Yes, Austin, working with Austin, he's going to put out some social media, we're going to have the news when it gets closer to the application opening date. It's already out in our news letter that went out, and we have fires on several city buildings.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
One quick question.
Councilmember Dugo?
Our businesses, is it necessarily like a standalone business, or can they be businesses that are in one of our plazas that require...
The owner would have to make the application. So if it is a plaza, the plaza owner would have to make the application.
The plaza owner will make the application.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to comments from the public. For non-agenda items, anyone wishing to speak, please come forward, state your name and address for our record. CMN, moving on to City Manager's report. City Manager McHugh.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Just a few announcements this evening. One thing I just wanted to bring to your attention regarding our youth programs. Recently, our youth programs went through a quality assessment back in October. Normally, that assessment is done in March, but the city was selected as a pilot site for a new assessment tool that's being used to track performance. On a scale of one to five, five being the best, our CARES program scored 4.48, and our Hot Spot, which is our team program, which is a program unlike anyone else has in Palm Beach County, and the demand that we have for that program continues to grow, that scored 4.82. So we're doing really well with our Hot Spot program, of course. We continue to do well with our CARES program, but thank you so much for the leadership from the council and just the direction that we provide and the priority that our youth programs is here in the city. Again, we have a program that no others have, and particularly as it relates to children that age out of childcare programs at 12 years old, we provide services that many others don't. One thing to note as well, which I know many of you do know currently, the city actually does employ 11 individuals who went through our programs, not just in our community and recreation services and youth programs, but our fire rescue, our administration department, so we're really proud of that. We do a really good job, and our staff does a fantastic job, so I wanted to note that. And just then, a couple of other announcements as well. I'm sorry, December 22nd, we will have our cross-ministries food pantry at the community center. This is something that has been ongoing. So our next one is December 22nd, right before the holiday. We will put that information out, but if you know of individuals that are in need, they can come to the community center between 4:00 and 6:00 PM on the 22nd of December, and they will be able to be provided food from the food pantry. We have the Fiesta de Buedlo, and that is going to be January the 8th at Community Park. Our Artsy Eve is January the 22nd here at City Hall. That event really grew from last, from the first year to last year, so we're pretty excited about that, going into that event. Again, that's January 22nd here at City Hall. Our Let's Talk Community Conversations, our next topic is anxiety. That one is going to be January the 12th from 6:30 to 8:00 PM at the community center. And then also beginning January 1st, in addition to the Property Improvement Program, our educational scholarship application period will open. And then in addition to that, our city photo contest, the next round of our city photo contest will begin as well. Just as a note for our holiday in the park, if you had the opportunity to attend the event, it was a wonderful event, very well-attended event. We had between 5,000 and 6,000 people attend that event, so very proud of everything that all the departments did and everyone to put together a wonderful event, and hope everyone has a wonderful holiday. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any comments or questions for our City Manager? Non, okay, moving on to our City Attorney's report, Attorney Tercia.
No report, other than happy holidays, and I'll answer any questions that you all may have.
Thank you. All right, moving to the Mayor and City Council's report. I'm going to go to my, step to my right. Deputy Mayor Tharp?
Request for a topic for discussion for the next meeting, the lighting, street lighting on Haverhill Road from Mantana to Lake Worth. If we could have a discussion regarding that, and prior to the next meeting, if every council member could drive that road during dark hours, I think it's eye-opening.
Can you repeat the address again, Haverhill and what?
From Haverhill Road from Mantana to Lake Worth Road.
Mantana...
There are no streetlights.
To Lake Worth? Okay. All right, let's add that to the discussion for the next meeting.
And happy holidays. That's it.
All right, happy holidays. Councilmember Noble?
Well, just to add to Mr. Tharp's comment about lighting, I had sent an email to our City Manager, and she, asking her as an update on the lights for the entire city, and she's saying, she mentioned that some works have been done, has been done, but she was going to investigate that. So I think that at the time, we're looking at Haverhill Road, we should get an update on the entire city. So that would be my suggestion. Number two, if Karen Gardner Young is there, I'd like to thank her for the presentation you're making, very clear, very understandable, and I hope you continue to do that in that format, because it was very good. Nothing else.
Quick question to our City Manager regarding the lighting. Is there a lighting report that you have compiled, City Manager?
We do have, our Public Works Department does have something. The west side of Jog Road has been done. I saw that they were working on the east side of Jog Road today, so all of the areas had been identified. We can let everyone know what FPL has completed thus far.
So can, when we hold that discussion, rather than have it just be that one specific?
Correct. We'll also update on all the lights based on what FPL's program was going to do in the city.
All right, Councilmember Dugo?
No report, thank you.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes. Are you here?
Yes.
With the Sitco?
Oh, yes, I believe, I think that they had, they, yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring back, as I do every year at this time, the last meeting, PBSO Cannon Dog Sitco, he was killed December 18th at the Wellington Green Mall. Wanted to pay tribute to him and all of the cannon dogs of the Sheriff's Department, all of the police departments throughout the county, the state, and throughout the country, of the service they provide the communities, and may so rest in peace. The second thing I wanted to talk about is, we had a distinguished board member, Major Jim Pagliano, served on one of our boards for a number of years. He passed away recently. It was a sad loss of everybody that passed away with a COVID, but I knew Jim very well, and I just wanted to say a few words and ask the council if we could put on the next agenda, therefore, one year, we could name a scholarship after him and everything he's done for our community. He was a major real estate holder in the city of Green Acres, and he did an awful lot for the community, both within City Hall and outside City Hall. The third thing I wanted to bring up is the, and Councilman, Deputy Mayor Tharp's district, the wall is at Maluka in Haverhill, John. If we could go ahead with, and just have our previous artist, Anthony Hernandez, instead of going out and doing all this, looking around for other people, I mean, he did a fantastic job over at Community Center on Jogging 10th at our community park, and just have him go in, and since he's an outstanding professor and he's noted throughout the county so well, just have him do the job and add to our Artsy program.
We can put that on the agenda for the next meeting for discussion.
And I just wanted, the last thing I want to bring up is a report to our City Manager and our City Attorney. The mayor and myself attended the Wellington Parade yesterday with the chamber. It was absolutely fantastic. I slept last night hearing fire sirens in my ear for eight hours. The firemen just dominated the parade, the Green Acres Fireman Andrea, with the equipment they brought, and with John I. Leonard Band that we had with us. It was a truly magnificent showing on behalf of the city of Green Acres, and we represented our residents very well yesterday. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Busque?
I just want to reiterate what City Manager McHugh said. The event on Saturday, the tree lighting, was amazing. It was well-attended, everybody was happy, and thank you. Thank you for all the departments that put that on, and all the people that worked there.
Thank you. For the Mayor's report, I've got a few things that I want to go over. First of all, that the holiday at the park was amazing. I arrived there, I think, maybe 15 minutes after we were supposed to have started, and there were lines everywhere, so kudos to our staff, to our team once again for outstanding job. You guys are pros at this now. I know that you guys know people are going to arrive well in advance, so kudos to you guys and the staff. It was just amazing. Also, I want to, I want to, if we can write a letter to the Central Palm Beach County Chamber and just say, thank you for an outstanding parade. I, you know, I feel like Green Acres was well-represented, and very proud of ourselves for having John I. Leonard be present. John I. Leonard did an amazing job at the parade, and I thought Green Acres was definitely well-represented at the parade. A couple of other things are just some news that I want to share with the council. I don't know if you've been following what's been happening with the districting around us, but at the county level, we are now, the majority of Green Acres, I want to say like 90, 95% now falls under District 3, which is Commissioner Kerners' district, so we're primarily represented by Commissioner Kerners, which also happens to be the new Hispanic district at the county level. So I thought you guys should know that. I also know that the school board also did their districts, and I believe the majority of the district falls, Green Acres falls into District 2. And then the other item that I want to let you know, at the TPA, which is a transportation planning agency, the executive director there, Nick Uren, tendered his resignation effective in probably middle of January. Right now, actually on Thursday, we're going to be making the decision whether to hire an interim, and then we're also going to be making a recommendation to hire a firm to come and do a search. So I just wanted to let you know that that's happening at the county level, at the TPA. And for those of you that don't understand at the TPA, have never heard of the TPA, they prioritize projects, infrastructure, transportation projects throughout the state of Florida that come down to, into the county. We prioritize them to see which ones are going to move forward first. So it's a key organization that we, Green Acres, has to sit on that particular board. So that concludes my report. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All right, motion adjourned.